I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Kathy will now call the roll.
Councilmember Zerkey?
Here.
Councilmember Storm?
Here.
Councilmember Lowen?
Here.
Councilmember Holstrom?
Here.
Councilmember Holfrich?
Here.
And Mayor Masters.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to say welcome to the citizens who've chosen to be here tonight. Thank you for being here. I'd like to welcome our distinguished guests from the media and the city staff for being here. You are all a very important part of our decision-making process tonight, so thank you for choosing to participate with us this evening. I did want to mention that there will be an opportunity for our guests to address the council, and we have a clipboard over here if you'd like to sign in. When it comes to that point of the meeting, I will collect the signatures or the tag there, and we'll just go in order of people's name. So if you'd like to speak tonight, make sure you get your name on that list. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is additions or amendments to the agenda, and as the custodian of our agenda, I'd like to offer Paul the opportunity to suggest any changes that he thinks we should make to the agenda.
I have none at this time, Your Honor.
And if there's any members of the council that see something that should be changed, added, deleted, that would be a good time to suggest that. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Just to clarify, the consent agenda is considered routine items, however, and we would typically make a motion that can vote on the agenda all at once. If there's anyone who would like, any member of council would like to remove an item for separate discussion, they can do that at this point. Okay. So I'll read the consent agenda. It's a rather lengthy one. It's approval of minutes from September 26, October 5, October 17, October 19, October 24, and November 3. Also, ratification of a bill in the amount of $324,798.55. An approval of resolution number 1225 authorizing a performance bond settlement for Windsong subdivision in the amount of $41,480 to be used for paving of Windsong Drive and an amount not to exceed $4,800 from Capital Reserve Streets, making appropriations and authorizing expenditures, as well as the resolution number 1226 authorizing specific staff members and city councilors to sign checks for the City of Cascade Locks and repealing resolution number 1204. So that's the consent agenda, and I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And motion by Gail Lewis. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Jeff Holfrich. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Randy.
Many of us weren't on council for some of these minutes. Is that an issue with approving them or not approving them, voting on them?
No, it is not. We've had them in the packet. We've had a chance to look them over. So having done that, it's just a routine item to approve that. If you have questions about whether something was said or not, you can ask. You have those pulled or verified. Okay. Other discussion?
I have a conflict of interest. I live on Windsong, so I feel that, you know, I shouldn't vote on that.
And they paved in front of your house?
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
You can either pull that from the consent agenda, or your vote could be to approve the consent agenda but abstaining from that particular subitem.
I'll just abstain for that particular item then.
So just make sure that Kathy gets that when the vote comes.
I can know that. Other discussion on the consent agenda. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? I have one item. Okay. The motion passes. Next item on the agenda, public hearings, and tonight we do not have it. Which brings us to our action items for this evening. We will proceed with a staff report and citizen questions, council motions that get into the discussion and action. First item is approve an amount not to exceed $11,000 for the purchase of a plowhead mower and proper attachments. Mr. Cook, I understand you're going to give that report to Tracy, who's late to go back to Sanders.
Right. I'm going to imitate Tracy tonight. Honorable mayor members of the city council, this is an item that came before the previous council in a work session and was reviewed. This is the purchase of a new mower head, and what Tracy reported at the time was that he's seeking an amount not to exceed $11,000 funding to come from the Capital Reserve Fund. The department is in a position where they have just about repaired the mower head to the extent that they can anymore, and so this will give him the capability of having two different kind of mower heads on the mower. Our staff recommendation is that you approve that.
Got a question.
Okay.
Or do we wait till?
I think the proper thing to do is finish the staff report, citizens ask questions, we'll have a motion second, and then we'll take questions and discussion. Is that?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone? I guess we didn't sign up for that item, but I'll just throw it out there if there's anyone that has questions about this. Okay, hearing none, we'll move to council action. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
It has been moved by Gail Lewis.
Second.
Second by Randy Holstrom. Okay, council discussion. Gail?
What fund? I know there's plenty of money for Tracy's department, but which fund is that coming out of?
Fund 51. Actually, I believe it's coming out of Fund 56, Capital Reserve, as far as I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I know.
Other questions or discussion from the council? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve a contract with Lifeflight Network LLC and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. And Paul has a staff report on that?
Honorable mayor members of the city council, this represents a change in the way that the Lifeflight program operates. This is a similar contract that the City of Hood River and the Parkdale Rural Fire Protection District are entering into. This changes the way that Lifeflight operates and reimburses the local municipalities. We've been told that there's about 80 members of Lifeflight in Cascade Locks. So what will happen in the new program that people sign up for is that 30 percent of the proceeds from the memberships will be kept by Lifeflight, 70 percent will be returned to the local jurisdiction. The individuals and families will pay $60 per year for emergency ground transport or $120 per year for both ground and air. And as I said earlier, 70 percent of the fees will be returned to the city for distribution as city council deems appropriate. Apparently, this has been worked on for a couple of years by the folks at Parkdale and City of Hood River, and so this is a much more favorable approach to the program than was experienced in the past. The city attorney was involved in reviewing the contract, and our recommendation is that you approve the contract and authorize the mayor to sign.
Okay, we didn't have anyone sign up for questions on that, so we'll move to council action. Is there a motion to approve this contract?
I make a motion to approve the contract with Lifeflight Network.
And authorize the mayor?
And authorize, I'm sorry, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Jeff Holfrich, move to approve the contract. Gail Lewis, seconded. Council question or discussion? Gail?
Yeah, I just want to make a point clarification regarding Lifeflight. Skamania is not a member of Lifeflight, so if citizens have an ambulance call and Skamania responds and assume that their deductible is covered, it's not. And I think this, just as we go through time and education of the community, I think that's an important point. Another point of clarification later, that I was told years ago by Carl Murphy, was you could specifically, or if not available, you could specifically request that Hood River to respond, who is a member. So there's just some things I think to educate on, for instance, if I had to.
Other comments or discussion from the council? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Next item for action is approval of intergovernmental agreement for fire services from the City of Hood River. Paul, you have a separate one on there as well?
I do. Honorable mayor members of the city council, the item before you is seeking approval of a temporary intergovernmental agreement between the City of Cascade Locks and the City of Hood River for the provision of fire and emergency ambulance services for a period that should last no more than 60 to, 30 to 60 days, I'm sorry. You have at your tables the latest fee chart, so I want to call that to your attention. What was missing from the fee chart that was in the packet was ambulance with crew, and that's $175, so it is on that chart.
Okay.
So as you are aware, the city at one point was without any fire or ambulance services. So in our discussions with the City of Hood River trying to patch together some level of service for the community, we came to the point of agreeing that, and Hood River agrees, in fact, they're going through the same thing tonight, that they would provide these services for the City of Cascade Locks for a fee. This is the precursor of our mutual aid agreements coming back. So all of the agencies in the county have agreed that the mutual aid agreements will be reinstated, and we think that will be no more than the 60 days. It will cost the city some funding, and I'll ask our finance director, Mary Ann, to report where that funding will come from.
After looking over the budget, the only place that they really can come from is the general fund. All the other funds are special funds or restricted funds, so the general fund is the only real place that it can come from. I did look through the budget, and I show we have a contingency of approximately $13,000 that we can transfer to the EMS department. And the other place that there is money is the beautification department, and there's about $3,000 in there. And the rest of the funds are pretty well strapped, so those are the only places that I can see that it can be generated from.
That concludes the report, Mayor.
So without having anyone sign up to discuss that, we'll move to council action. The appropriate action would be a motion to approve the temporary governmental agreement for fire safety services.
So I'll make a motion. Does that work?
I'll second it. And authorize the mayor to sign.
And authorize the mayor to sign.
So it's been moved by Eva, seconded by Gail. Any questions or discussion from the council? Tom?
Was this the one where if they do come down for something and it becomes one where insurance, insurance covers it, they get the insurance, and then they don't pay, they don't charge us for the call?
That's correct. That is correct.
They pay for my calls, and talk about insurance, and we're not allowed to.
Exactly. Neither will they bill us if they're on their way and someone else responds. And it's probably good for me to kind of review for council what we've been able to patch together. So in this interim period, what we've been able to do is get a reinstatement of the AMR ambulance mutual aid out of Troutdale. We've been able to reinstate the Skamania EMS mutual aid contract. All of the mutual aid contracts on the Washington side of the river stayed in place. We reconfirm that Corbett Fire District Mutual Aid is in place, and so this was the last piece for us to try to provide as much service short of having your own department up and operating as we could get to.
Is that your question?
Yep.
Thank you. Mary Ann described two different sources of potential funds to cover not only this expense, but there's another expense pending. And I guess for clarification, do those transfers take effect after this decision? Or how does it?
No, I'll have to bring back a resolution for you to make it final.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
So the resolution would be a transfer of funds from contingency or from beautification to cover any expenses that could arise resulting from this?
If that's how council wishes to provide funds for this, I do need to check with the Oregon Department of Labor to make sure that I am correct in how I can do that, but that will come back at the next meeting.
Okay.
So question for Paul, just to be clear, so if there's an ambulance call and maybe in a few weeks we're able to provide some ambulance service, then Hood River's not part of that, that they would become a backup if we're able to get ambulance service going?
Yes, it may come from the Skamania EMS, or it may come from Hood River.
Or ourselves.
If we can get ours up and operating. That is our priority, and I'll go through that in depth later on when I give my fire department report, but yes.
Other comments or question from the council? Paul?
Can I give one more time on that? How much in the general, how much in the beautification?
There's $13,000 in general contingency and $3,000 in beautification. The total of $16,000.
Eva?
It seems to me in reading it and then talking to people that it's a good, as you put it, a big, a good stopgap for our community. You know, it sounds like old volunteers and new volunteers are willing to look at that and to work with Devin. He's pretty inspirational, he's a very good leader, so I think that it's a good choice for this.
And Paul, just so I'm clear on this as well, this is sort of a pay-as-you-go. If they don't respond, or if they respond and get called back, Skamania takes the call first, it won't cost the city anything.
That is correct.
It's only if they do respond to calls, to incidents with their equipment, with their personnel, and insurance doesn't cover it, the city will be paying.
That's right.
Okay. So do you have an estimate over the course of 30 to 60 days as to how much? I think you put that in your staff report, but I just want to make sure that's out and open, so everyone understands what your estimate would be.
Yeah, in the staff report, you'll see that we estimated that to be as much as $2,000 a month. And of course, if you had 10 calls that we had to pay for, it would exceed that. But looking at the annualized number of calls, it's going to be between that $1 and $2,000 per call number per month. If we have none, and we can activate the mutual aid agreement, so you aren't going to pay anything.
Further discussion? Yeah?
Sorry, I did get ahead of myself on the last one a little bit, but as far as the response, I think it's, like you said, if the insurance company's going to pay, we're not going to have to pay anyway, and so I think it's a good choice for our citizens. So we're going to close.
Okay. So there's no more discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving this intergovernmental agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a temporary contract for technical and management assistance with the City of Hood River. Discussion?
Mayor, members of the city council, this is that contract arrangement that I talked to you when you first got appointed. We're asking you to retroactively approve this intergovernmental agreement with the City of Hood River for temporary technical assistance and management services to help rebuild the Cascade Locks Fire Department in an amount not to exceed $2,500 per month and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. In discussions with the City of Hood River, we felt that it was important that their chief be in here to help us rebuild the department, to ensure that our policies and our procedures are proper and in place, and to help guide the process of bringing the former volunteers back into the department, and then to move forward from there. We're going to be paying about $48 an hour for about 12 hours a week of Chief Wells' assistance. This contract could last for as much as six months, so it will depend very much on how quickly we can rebuild the department and get it to operating it on its own and get the policies and procedures brought to you and become adopted. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we didn't have anyone sign up to discuss that, so we'll move to council action. The action would start with a motion and a second.
I make a motion to approval of temporary contract for technical assistance regarding the fire department.
Okay, the motion's been made by Mark Storm, seconded by Tom Cramlett.
And authorize the mayor to sign.
And authorize for the mayor to sign.
Okay. You agree with that, Tom? So we'll move to question and discussion.
My copy has this expiring a few months back, so it should be maybe 2012?
Yes, it's, yeah, the correct one, it's April 30th, 2012.
Okay. Thank you.
Gail?
Just point of clarification, retroactively, according to what's written, we're saying going back to November 2nd, correct?
That is correct.
So it's not like four months behind or anything, it's a matter of, and he's been involved, is that understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
I tried to make it longer, counselor, but I just couldn't do that.
I know what's going to occur working with Devon Wells, that's his name, right?
Devin.
Devin?
Okay.
It's going to be an interest to a large portion of the community as well as current volunteers, as well as the previous members of the department. Is there some way that we can include the action plan as a part of the minutes or something? I mean, there's more information here than what you discussed, and I think some of the other information is the important information as far as scope.
Right. Good question, counselor. Our intent is to bring Devin in to meet with you in a special work session, to share with you, here's the work plan, here are the pieces we already have done, here's where we're going, so you can have a discussion and dialogue with him about anything that you would have questions about, but yes, we'll have a work plan step by step laid out for you to look at.
Well, not just in the man, I think there are community too, and that meeting's not scheduled, right?
The work session with council? It is not. We're going to discuss that later.
So again, is there some way that we can take the action plan, the background information or something, and include that in the minutes? Or some way to get this published as an addendum to the minutes or something?
Do you mean to the contract or to the minutes?
No, so it's available to the public.
What he's asking is when the minutes are published, to have the background or like you said, the action plan attached into the minutes, so if somebody were to look at the minutes on the webpage, you could go, oh, this is what they're talking about, and say the outline of what we're doing, that's.
Yeah, I mean, the agreement itself.
Oh, okay, yeah, and the agreement itself. Just as an addendum into it, can you say, if you further the addendum in the minutes, if you're able to do that? Not have to do it word for word or?
It would all be on the website.
Okay.
It would be? Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, when you say the action plan, are you talking about the last three pages of the contract?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, I think that's already on the website.
Oh, is it?
As part of the contract.
Okay. I wasn't sure how much went, tell me how much I use the website, huh? Okay.
But are you asking, are you asking to have it published separately as a?
No, as long as it's out there where people can divest it, you know. Okay. Thank you.
Good suggestion, thank you.
Other questions or comments about this motion? Okay, I'll just say that for me, the idea of bringing in an outside expert, and we shouldn't, no one should make any mistake about this, Devon Wells is an expert, and bringing him into our department to analyze our procedures and to help us rebuild is the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do for the current volunteers, any volunteers who might come back, and it's the right thing to do for the community to provide services. So I fully support the motion. I think it's, I think we're doing the right thing here for the community. Yeah?
And I don't know if it was mentioned, but it's even intended that he'll be involved in the interview process for members that apply, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, as part of the rebuilding of the department.
Yes, right.
Mayor, if I could, oh, go ahead, counselor.
I'll go to Jeff.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just wanted to say, I think it's a very wise decision what you've done, Paul, and kind of in this agreement, because I think it's really important to have somebody that has an eye outside of what our town is, and have somebody from the outside looking, that doesn't have a jaded view one way or the other. I think this becomes a good neutral starting point for us to rebuild our fire department.
Paul?
So, Mayor, if I could, in the process of trying to figure out what is the best pathway forward for you as a community in the provision of this service, I've visited with, on-site, talked to on the phone, 14 different small community volunteer fire agencies, and I have to admit, I, this is going to be in the paper? Almost every, every chief said, well, geez, you have Devon Wells right near you, you need to use him.
Other comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote. All those in favor of approving the contract for technical management systems for the City of Hood River and authorize the mayor to sign it, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Final item on our action agenda tonight is to reconfirm the contract with Interstate Administrator Cook. Paul?
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, I'm not going to declare a conflict of interest, so the attorney can club me with a baseball bat if she wants to. I thought as a, as a professional courtesy, because the council has changed radically in the time period that I've been here, and I came here the last week in August, and so I thought I would provide you an opportunity to either reconfirm or cancel the contract that I have with the City of Cascade Locks. So the recommendation is that you change the method of housing payment to reflect payment to me for the actual room costs. So I would be submitting an invoice for the actual time that I spend at whatever motel I stay. So I would be submitting an invoice for the actual time that I spend at whatever motel I stay at, and because that is a part of the contract. The annualized cost of my contract is sixty thousand a year. You're buying me for at least forty hours a week, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, Paul, we did not have anyone sign up for questions on that, so we'll move to council action, which will be a motion and a second.
I have a motion to reconfirmation of contract in interim city administrator.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Mark Storm, seconded by Randy Holmstrom. Any questions or discussion from the council?
Now, why do you feel it's necessary to change the lodging, the way the lodging?
Well, I think we can probably control that cost a little bit better.
Well, it says not to exceed.
That's right. But if we can lower that, I'd like to do that.
But paying on as occurred doesn't promise it will fall lower.
So my thinking was, in a normal situation, the contractor would bill you, send you an invoice for the actual cost of that service, and that's, that's what I'm recommending be changed.
Well, that's not what you're doing now?
No, no, the city pays directly.
So you could actually go to, I'm sorry. So you, would the city still stay with the same vendor, or you could choose another vendor?
Oh, I could, I could stay at a different place, sure.
To a different vendor, so the contract initially was with one vendor?
Right.
And now you want basically the ability to go to a different vendor if you choose?
Yeah, if I desired to do that.
Yeah, I think it makes it more sense that way, because then the city isn't liable for catering, you know, one motel or one, you know, one hotel or wherever you stay at, I think that's, I think it's fair.
I don't want to, well, I don't want to beat this to death, but how it's paid is not, at least in what I'm reading, isn't stated in the contract, it just puts a dollar limit on the total monthly amount of expenditures. So if it's being paid to one vendor by us directly, that sounds like a procedural issue rather than a contract issue.
Well, the contract is written that the city pays that directly to the vendor. I'm suggesting you change that.
Five A, the last sentence of five A, contractor shall arrange with city finances to give a pay cut after the lodging expenses.
Oh, okay, okay. So, so does that go? So, and I think that, I think that is a procedural issue about how it's done. I also think that the bigger question before us is, do we want Paul to continue as our interim city administrator or not? And that's, you know, that's the one change that's being made, but I think that that's the main question for us to decide is, will he continue or not?
Well, I miss liking the finish tonight.
Gee, I don't know, Gail, somebody.
I have to say, I've been impressed with Paul from the get-go when I met him, and how he's helped facilitate and helped the city get back on its feet, and so I'm supporting reaffirmation of this contract.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think Paul's been great with the citizens, you know, his open door policy and, you know, listening, and I really look at that as, you know, something of plus, so.
Other comments or discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the appearance of interested citizens. And I just wanted to mention that the purpose of this in our meeting is so that we can hear through a variety of different perspectives on all sorts of issues that are facing our community. So we do invite citizen participation in these meetings. And probably the thing I said earlier is, as you come in, sign up if you're interested in making a comment.
If I just want to sign up first, now say aye.
Yeah, no problem. But we'll just, we'll take that for when we get to this item on the agenda, and then we'll invite people to, to come to the table and make their, make their comments in the order that it's in. Is there anyone else? We'll start with Debbie Fine, who's going to talk about the Festival of Lights.
Yes, do you want me just?
Have a seat.
Right here, Debbie.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm here as Lioness Vice President, and I'm announcing or telling about the Festival of Lights for Cascade Locks. It's going to be Sunday afternoon and evening, December the fourth, at City Hall, and it's free to all. Pictures with Santa are going to be from four-thirty to six, and music sing-along is going to be from five to six, and Awana program is going to be during that time also. And we'll be offering crafts, crafts, arts and crafts in the council room, cookies, coffee, cocoa, and hot cider. I can't see the glasses, sorry. And outside, about six fifteen, we're going to have the ceremony for the tree lighting. And I believe that's all I have. Is there any questions?
And Pat Hesgaard from the Lions?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I'm Pat Hesgaard, the president of the Columbia Gorge Lions, I'm proud to say. I'm also proud to say that this year, we're giving the Christmas giving tree money in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That's one hundred dollars more than we've given in the past. And being a small club, it's very, well, it makes me very proud to be the president of such a club. And I think I'll just give this to Kathy, and, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Jamie, how's everybody?
I'm still here concerned about my water issues. I've told every city council, we ain't going to let that fire in. You all know what I'm talking about? We all say we've got money problems, but I still want something down there. I'm going to get gravel from Dennis, but I'm still looking for some city action. But my main concern coming down here tonight is that this town's infested with rats. Wherever the newspaper lady is, don't tell everybody. But what's going on in this town, there's been several people in this town, I killed ten. I've never had a rat in my life. Another neighbor down, down the way, he killed ten, and then his neighbor killed ten, and I told the other neighbor. Then we heard his story, somebody has a snake in this town, they're not taking proper care, they're raising rats, letting them go out there on that river, down there at the beach, is what I hear. You know, this is hearsay, but it's pretty good hearsay, because I killed ten myself, and this other person had a video camera where his kitten was killing a rat. And these rats really kind of look domesticated, but it is a power that needs to be taken care of, because it can, it can go wild on us, on this town. And all I can say is, you get these plastic traps that they sell, at Home Depot has them, or they have a better spring, hook them up there with peanut butter, because you'd be surprised, I was shocked, you know, that they're traveling little parasites, and this town better get some action. That's why I came to not, just to not let that sleep, along with the water problem down there. So anyhow, that's the bad news I wanted to tell everybody, because I don't want to see this problem. This is horrible, you know? So beware, buy traps, you know? What can I say? Infested.
Thank you.
Do we need big traps?
They're pretty big, that they have to have jaws that big, man. We're thinking about doing a video like those, those guys on Channel Ten or whatever, you know?
Okay, Kirby?
My name is Kirby Newman-Rey, I'm editor of the Hood River News. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, for letting me take a, I'll just take a couple of minutes. Jamie, first of all, I'm the newspaper lady. And I was taking notes, and I was taking notes, so I just.
Well, usually rats, the non-union people who are scouting, you know, it's all kind of funny to say, but, you know, I had one neighbor, I told him, and he was so relieved, because one came into his house, and he was like, I thought it was coming from my other house, and I said, no, they're dropping them off right down there at the river, and so I want some type of action, because this person's missing a couple steps, because he can't just let them go.
Well, I just wanted to let you know.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I thought twice, actually, about three times before sitting down here at this table to do this, because as member of the press, I'm here to report and not participate, really. On rare occasions, in the thirty-one years that I've been covering city councils and other public bodies, I've done this. And the only reason I sit down today is that I, I want to clear the record a little bit about some items, some statements, that is, that are in the minutes that are before you tonight from the September twenty-sixth meeting. The council has changed radically since then in more ways than one, and I appreciate the spirit of welcome, for one thing. Again, in all my years doing this, no, no mayor has ever welcomed me to a council meeting, so thank you. So, given that the personnel in the room tonight have changed greatly, and the statements that I'm going to address were made by somebody who is no longer on council, I just feel that since it's a matter of public record, and it was, it is before you tonight, there are just a couple of things that I wanted to clarify. And not to pick on any one person, but it's on the record, former council members, Pruitt's, the comments are the ones that I refer to. And I refer to, again, the September twenty-sixth meeting, and boy, I was looking at this, and I should have marked it. I thought I had the exact page number and so forth. But in, in, it is page, yes, page, page seven of the minutes from September twenty-sixth. And I'll just read a portion of this. Mrs. Pruitt, we had a code of ethics for the news media. C.M. Pruitt said she strongly objects to the Hood River Enquirer, said it is not a newspaper. She said there was a political stance taken. She said the mayor requested three press releases and letters to be in the Hood River News, and not one appeared in the newspaper. She said there were numerous letters written to the editor that were not printed, that would have substantiated any work the council was doing. C.M. Pruitt said it was stated two weeks ago that an article would be printed regarding I.C.A. Cook's work plan and still has not been put into the newspaper. The rest of her comments don't pertain to the media itself. A couple of things there she's right about, one is that I did state in the paper that we would have a story about the work plan, and that was not in there, and I acknowledge that. And it's also true that one person wrote a letter to the editor that did not make it into the paper, and that was a situation I dealt with directly with that individual. She wasn't happy with the outcome, but I dealt with that one individual. For the record, one individual, not numerous, not lots of people who wrote letters to the editor. Our policy is basically this, you write a letter, your name's on it, we call you up if you confirm that you wrote it, and if there's nothing in there that we know is tantamount lies or malice or libel, we'll print it. We don't vet them, we don't decide to run what's in the paper, because we agree with it or don't, or don't agree with it. Virtually everything goes into the paper. There weren't numerous people who wrote notice to the editor that did not make it in, that is. Her statements about political stances, she's entitled to her opinion, but I want to assure all here that in this rather difficult time that the city's been through in the past, the Hood River News has done its level best to report without a political stance in any way, shape, or form. And I thank you for your time.
Martha Lamont, Cascade Locks. Just, holidays are just around the corner, somehow this happened, I don't know how, but. I'm helping coordinate the Christmas food baskets here in Cascade Locks with Megan Webb, and we just put a notice out at the city for people to put their names in. Some people have already signed up. This is not in conjunction with the food boxes at the Best Western, I believe that's a county effort. So if anybody wants to sign up for both, if they feel they have a need, they're welcome to do that. So I believe that the, we'll be going around for a collection the Monday after Thanksgiving, and then we're going to look for volunteers from the community to help put the baskets together, because I believe in the past they've had a rather limited amount of volunteers, and I'd like to see more. And as the site coordinator for the food bank, I wanted to remind everyone that because of Thanksgiving, we're going to be giving our, a distribution date will be on Tuesday, it's already posted on Channel Twenty-three, but just a reminder that the distribution will be this next Tuesday before, before the Thanksgiving holiday, from the same time, two to four. So if anybody has a special request or can't make that time, they can contact me, and I can do an emergency box or, or a shut-in box if they so desire. Thank you.
Okay, that was all we had on our list, people sign up.
This has nothing to do with anything, I'm just leaving.
Or was there anyone else that you got a chance to sign up? I'd love to, okay. I'll go for parents of interested citizens. Next item on our agenda are the reports and presentations. And we're back to Mr. Cook with a report on a review of city council priorities.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this is that portion of the agenda where we would hope over time to bring items to you for discussion that you may see at a future agenda. So some of those things will fit that mold, others will not. This is, the first piece here is my interim city administrator's report. So in addition to my midweek status report and my end-of-the-week status report, every two weeks you'll see one of these. And there are a couple of items that I've added to this, let me cover those first. First is that I was notified about two hours ago by the Florida Cascade Locks that tomorrow morning at ten a.m. at the court office, there'll be a presentation on alternative energy sources using the channel. I will be there, I haven't had a chance to talk to Tracy, see if he's going to be available. Alternative energy was an item. Alternative energy was an item that's on the priority list the council established for me, so I think maybe the timing is pretty good to attend that, and I'll report back on that. We did receive in the mail a notice of tort claim proposed settlement from former fire chief Pritchard, so we're in discussions with CIS Insurance, who's handling that for the city, and as soon as we know what direction their interest is in going on, I'll give you all a report, so that's happening. The snow removal, if you look on your table, there's a reprint of the traditional snow removal plan, and the diagram the Public Works has is on the whiteboard there for you to take a look at, so this will tell you the Public Works is geared up, and they're ready if we get snow, and need to do snow removal, and any kind of sanding, so that's the program they have set up. As a result of the recent city council appointment process, there now exists one vacancy in the planning commission, I want to suggest that one of the things that council consider doing is having a work session with staff to talk about what boards and commissions do you want to have, what process do you want to use to place people on those boards and commissions, and what kind of standardization, if any, do you want to use in the application process, so I think it's something that we're hoping that you'll want to do, is have a work session, so we can discuss all of those issues, and then be moving in the same direction. We had also discussed the concept of a pretty thorough city council training and orientation process, I did have Carrie print off the new League of Oregon Cities City Council Member Manual, and that baby is that thick, so I'm not sure that it's going to be very effective, but I'm going to go through it and see if I can call out what can be used quickly, and in a more humanly understood fashion for you, so that would be one thing that we would like to have you consider doing. The very first session that you do this with, I want to have all the department heads and all the employees sit with you, so that you can look at all of the priorities, all of the issues that came up over the last ninety days, and that we can begin to rebuild the relationship between council and all of the staff, so that's one. Second is a session covering responsibilities and requirements of the city council, I'll try to pare down that manual, and we'll use that as the basic for that, I'm also reviewing the, just a second attorney, so I'm also reviewing the videos that are available from the League of Oregon Cities, and how those might be made available to you.
I think that handbook is available on the LOC website, it's one of the member services links, so you need the super top-secret password to get to that, but it talks about all different aspects of local government law, as well as your role as city councillor, and how city councils work, and that aspect of local government, so even if it doesn't get printed out and delivered to you, it's always a resource that's available to you online.
Now, Mr. Kirby, I'm going to quote an outlandish number, so you don't have to print this, so when I talked to the, when I talked to the league, they said it cost a bazillion dollars to get the manual, but we could get it for free off their webpage, and that's what we had Carrie do, so we now have a copy of it, and we'll try to come up with a number.
How many Z's are there in a bazillion?
Seventeen. Yes, yes, council.
Let's not finish, yeah, then we'll have a discussion of questions.
I'm recommending a session where you review the priorities, I think you're all aware of the fact that there are seventeen priorities established by the previous council, that I'm slowly working my way through, and the work plan needs to be completed, so what I would like to suggest is that one of the work sessions, this probably could be done in nineteen or twenty hours, Mayor, that we go through, we go through those priorities, and then if you want to recast them, that's okay, and then let's talk about what you'd like to see in future elements of the work plan. The other big issue that's looming is the opportunity to meet with Mary Ann and I, and go over the city's financial situation, what the reports coming off the new program are looking like, and then talk about how you want to have us transfer that information on to you, so that's another one, and I realize this is a lot of work, but it's all work that needs to be done, and only a council and a mayor can do that, we're here to help you get through that, so those are my recommendations regarding those issues. As I reported earlier on the contract situation with the city of Hood River, Acting Chief Zerfing works about eight hours a week, he is a volunteer, he and I are meeting sometime twice a week with Chief Wells, to try to rebuild the department. Then, the last item in my report has to do with the priorities, so I gave you a quick thumbnail status of the priorities. The previous council set as my number-one priority, resolving the issues surrounding the fire department, and then trying to rebuild that, we're in the process for that, the report I'll share with you in a few minutes was due October first, but at the time I didn't have anybody to give the report to, so it's coming to you tonight for just a presentation, so you can get a feel for that, some of the actions that are recommended in that report you already took tonight, there are others that you may want to consider over time, before you make a final decision on it. Priority two was the, to prepare and deliver clear, easily-understood financial reports, we're still having some minor difficulty getting the new program to work properly, but I am convinced that Mary Ann is going to get that handled in a short period of time, and we'll be able to sit down with you and have a work session about what those reports look like, and then begin to talk to you about how do you want that customized to meet your needs. The third priority was to plan for and strengthen the community's economic development to create jobs and enhance the local business success, the previous council had created a joint economic development task force between the port and the city, we're going to discuss that issue, because there are now some vacancies on the city side for that organization, so that group is meeting, it is working on a priority basis for, on the Nestle project, downtown revitalization, and some issues around tourism. So on December fifth, there will be a meeting here with some of the downtown folks, and anybody else who wants to participate, to begin talking about what is our vision for the downtown area, you have a pre-existing approved downtown revitalization plan, that's part of the discussions to date, in between the port and the tourism, your tourism committee, they're meeting with all the business owners and the building owners in downtown, to try to enlist them to sit with us, and talk about where are we going, how do we improve your business, what can we do to help to bring people to town. Priority four, and there's been no action on this, was the comprehensive water system master plan, so you'll see when you look at the list of seventeen priorities set by the previous council, a number of them have to do with your infrastructure, we need to have a comprehensive wastewater plan, a water system plan, an electric plan, all of those are going to be critical for you as you move forward, trying to make economic development happen in the community. That ends my report.
Okay, so I'm assuming, Paul, you're open for questions and discussion of items on the report?
I'd consider it at this point, no, yes, absolutely.
Gail, did you have something?
I got a couple things, this is my opinion, but, one, I just don't think it's a good use for me, of you, to be going through this damn manual, you know, it's available online, those that want to review it can review it online, and I just think with everything that we have going on, I just don't think that's a good use of your time, my opinion. Probably on a bigger note, you know, we keep talking about when we have a session, we need to talk about this or that, this or that, yet we haven't scheduled anything, and I know it's not on the agenda, but when's our next meeting, two weeks?
Your next, yeah.
Our next regularly, if we don't schedule that.
Yeah, but I looked at the calendar, on Monday night, there's a lot of blanks on Monday night, so I just think we ought to put some stake in the ground, and maybe it's not your twenty-hour meeting, it may be three, you know, six-hour meeting, or something, but I really think we ought to get educated on the rationalization of when to setting the policies, I'm not saying they're right or wrong, but seeing the net effect without knowing what was discussed that was not chosen, I think the first two were, in my mind, obvious, fire and the financials, but I just have a sense of urgency that we ought to put a statement around the schedule, if we have to cancel, we have to cancel it, or, you know, whatever we get through, we get through it, maybe we won't cover everything, but I think financial stuff is very important, and I think that's one thing the community expects us to be managing, and I, for myself, have a lot of unknown, and I assume everybody else does, too, but as far as the system integrity goes, you know, I've talked with Mary Ann often, she's been fighting the system, and there's a training plan, a training event scheduled in January, you said?
January, February, we haven't nailed down the date yet.
But in the meantime, they're giving her phone assistance, and what I'd suggest is you get on the phone with the vendor to sell, and start threatening to hold up our maintenance agreement, because it's, you know, we're three months behind, and at least when I manage vendors, you know, you have to talk tough with them, if they, you know, we're paying money for their support and assistance, and we've got a system right now that essentially isn't of value to the council.
True.
And asking her to whittle through it, I just don't think is fair and reasonable, so, it's just a suggestion I have.
That's a good suggestion, councillor, and Mary Ann and I have, I said, that's a good suggestion, and Mary Ann and I have talked about that, and I've offered to get on the phone and do that, so.
Okay, so that means.
I'd be happy to do that.
So you'd like to do it?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Will you let me know when you did do it?
I will, yes, and Mayor, if I could, I think the other thing, and you and I have talked about this, the reason that I introduced the need for all of these sessions, from a staff point of view, is to give you guys a feel, and gals a feel, for what's coming down the pike, and what we need to begin to deal with, it's up to you to set the dates for those work sessions, and we're more than happy to be a part of that.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll shut up.
Yeah, right. And just to kind of address that issue, I think that this is an appropriate time for us to talk about, you know, it's been presented as part of this report, that we have several different sessions, and I think it would be good to be addressed, have a discussion about prioritizing those, and then picking a date, and, you know, I think there are some things scheduled, such as tourism committee meetings and stuff on Monday nights, that doesn't mean that we can't still hold a session and share a space, or things like that, so I think now is a good time for us to talk about that, and, you know, I don't want to preempt any other discussion, if there is some, but I'm hoping we will do that.
Yeah?
Yes.
So does anybody have any time periods that they're not available?
Well, I just work, so, you know, usually on Monday nights, a lot of times I'm available, but sometimes I'm not available until eight, or eight-thirty anyway.
Okay. Anybody else?
Nights.
Monday nights?
Nights when you're not available?
No, we're going to have a meeting. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Sundays are usually open for me, but I don't really want to.
So next Monday night?
Open maybe, but evenings are the, are the, are the, the thing that works best for me, because I'm working during the day.
So next Monday night?
I think that's a good idea. Is there any you can't make it?
First one.
Do you think, is that?
I can't remember what time I start, that I get off work, but, yeah, we can go and set it up, and I can always come in late.
We can fill it, yeah.
Tell them this Monday night work.
I'd have to ask my wife.
Okay.
She knows everything that's going on, a lot more than I do, but Monday night shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Same time, seven, would it be seven?
Yeah, and we may need to adjust it a little bit.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Ready?
Yeah.
Yep, that's.
Well, it's more depending on what my wife has to know, but I don't think there's much issue on time, so.
You want me to talk to her?
No, don't.
Yeah, well, let's talk about priorities for that meeting, and, I don't know, Paul, if you'd like to go back through those suggestions, or if you'd like me to repeat them?
Sure, I can do that, Mayor.
Okay.
One would be a session with the department heads and I, to just kind of bring you up to date as to all of those newsprint sheets, the process we went through to get there, what became the priorities, and then, and I developed a list of priorities off of what the department heads gave me, so that would be one.
Excuse me, and how long would you think that would take?
Seventeen hours. No.
You talk slow.
Well.
I'm just trying, bigger than a pig's snore.
I believe in doing this stuff more than in two-hour increments.
So it would take two hours to go through all of this?
As a max, yeah.
What I would suggest, Gail, is that we hear the list, and then we set the priorities of what we want to work on first, and then we'll have that list, and when we get to two hours, we'll either decide to continue for another hour, or we'll decide to go home, depending on what your wife says.
So it'll be two hours. Second suggestion is that, is a session to kind of talk about the responsibilities and requirements, part of that I think we can satisfy for you by making available the league's manual, or at least elements of it, and getting you access to some of their videotapes. Third session, yes.
Paul, I just wanted to touch on that, I do think that there is an important place for that, I don't want to throw that out altogether, because it's important that we understand, that everyone's on the same page, as we operate together as a team, so whether it's a shorter, or, you know, or if you condense it, either way, I think we need, I want to say that there has to be a place for that, so that we are all operating on the same line.
I have some memos, and we could put together a packet with the council rules.
Right, yeah.
Some of the memos that I prepared, that address some of the most serious issues like conflict of interest, ex parte bias, that kind of thing, emails, public meetings, public records, so at least there could be a thin.
Starter kit?
Starter kit.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Paul?
Yeah. Third suggestion was a session to review the priorities and my work plan, and then for you to tinker with that, make any adjustments or changes that you want to do, and then the fourth one is a session with Mary Ann and I on the city's financial reporting system, and where you're at financially. There will probably be fifty or sixty additional topics that will come up, but they will present themselves, and we'll know when we get there.
Paul, quickly if I'm wrong, you also mentioned a work session on boards, commissions, and committees.
Yes, yes.
We have that opinion on the planning commission, and if that's a priority, we need to look at standardized ways to fill vacancies.
Yes, yeah.
So would that be a good?
It would be, yes.
So, meeting with department heads, a review of responsibilities and requirements of city council members, review the priorities that previous council established, and Paul's work plan, a finance report from Mary Ann, and a work session on committees, commissions, and boards, is there one of those that rises to the top, that we think would be a priority for us?
Finance.
Anyone else?
I was reading, so what were the priorities?
Maybe we'll just, we'll go through, and then maybe one at a time, we can say what our priority is, okay, a meeting with the department heads, to hear their priorities, and to rebuild relationship between staff and council, a review of the responsibilities and requirements of. Uh, the review of the responsibilities and requirements of, of council members. The starter kit that Alex is gonna put together. Uh, review the priorities and work plan as part of Paul's contract. Uh, the finance report and a work session on committees, commissions and boards. Okay? So is there, is there something there?
Well, the work plan, I think would have to be a, a priority for my mind, so that's finance.
I, I agree with him. I think the finance, the work plan, well, the projects and work plans are, are top, above the rest.
Uh, Tom?
So, we're looking at this for next Monday. Would Mary Ann be able to have, would you have, they'll have something together for us for, for next Monday to be able to go over?
Don't know. Honestly, I'm still working with Cassell.
After we get a Sunday phone call, maybe we'll be soon.
We could speed that up, yeah, yeah.
So we can bring, we can raise the top right down, we, we may not.
I, you, I'll keep it on there, and if I, I will do my best to.
Okay.
Did you have other preferences for?
No, no, that's Alex's.
I think.
Jeff?
I think the meeting with department heads is probably, to me, the one more important ones out of this, prior to that, because we as a council need to understand what the departments do and how we can help them, how they're helping the citizens in the big, bigger, broader picture. We need to understand that work environment. Um, the, the financial thing rises right up there too, but if she's unable to get reports in an easy, understandable manner that we need, that's, that's kind of brings that down. And I think, uh, the review, if she's unable to get that as their, as the, that priority going there, the review of our starter kit is a big one. We just need to know what our job is, make sure we're doing it right, and, uh, starting there and taking some smaller steps. We want to take a big bite out of some stuff, but I think we need to measure what we do and understand what our role is and understand what our city's role and what they're doing too. I think it's important for us to have that, for that team building portion of that.
Okay. Eva?
Um, Paul, on, on any of these, are, are they all you figuring two hour trainings? Or can some be put together, you know, like you put two and a half?
I, I think probably some could be put together. We certainly, i- i- any of these topics could take hours. Um, I mean, I know city councils who take an entire Saturday just to cover one topic. Uh, I'm not sure if that's beneficial for you at this point. But I think if you, uh, one option would be to say, well, let's set, you know, e- e- every, every other Monday, we're gonna have a work session now to exceed two hours, and our first topic is gonna be this, and the next one will be that. I do think we could bring the department heads and the employees in and go through all of this and maybe kill the priorities and begin building that relationship in the same two hour block of time. And if it doesn't do everything that we want, you can schedule another one.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So each one's priorities is what we do in a two hour block? I thought this is what we do, how we prioritize it within the meeting?
No, each one.
Each one take two hours is your projection?
Each one of the suggested meetings, yeah.
Suggest, okay, all right.
Well, and Counselor, that, that doesn't mean that we, I mean, I could have you discuss priorities for seven or eight hours, but I don't think that's gonna do anybody any good. I think we limit it to about two hours, which is about the maximum amount of time that anybody's gonna be able to sit and absorb this stuff at some evening after you've all worked hard. I, I think that should be enough.
Eva?
Um, so what I think would have been helpful for me and my, um, when I was dealing with, uh, when I first came in, is you have to put the groundwork in first, and some of us, some people, you know, like Gail's been on here before a ton, you know, there's obviously some people have been here, but, um, we have new people. And so I think we need to do it right. So I'd like to see that we, you know, we set the groundwork on that, on what our responsibilities and requirements are and, you know, where we can get additional information and help from and that kind of stuff, and then setting our priorities where we're going, and then go on from there. 'Cause finance, fi- we definitely need to know where we're at, but if it's also new, it's pretty overwhelming. Make sense?
Yeah. Alex, and then Mark.
I was just gonna say that, um, well, holiday's coming up and, um, knowing my schedule, um, with the starter kit, we don't necessarily have to have a meeting on it right away. Um, I can get that material together by the end of this week and get an email to you, and that's something that you can have and read, um, and then decide if we need to have a special training on it. Because perhaps with that, along with the, uh, videos that LOC has available, um, you might be easy studies and pick it all up. Without it, without a meeting with all of this other important stuff that we've got going on.
Mark?
Yeah, I like to talk to the, uh, department heads just to see what their priorities are, and then, you know, look at the priorities on the wall here, and, uh, that would be a big, uh, thing, you know, that would be a good idea.
Yeah. And, and again, regarding finance, I'm not actually talking about any new reports, but, you know, some of us weren't involved in the details, uh, that resulted in whatever our current budget is. And so when I talk about financials as the starting block, I'm just saying to have, give each of us a copy of the current budget and have discussion about how that changed from one year to the other, or what some of the rationalization, including projects that went into that, to the starting point, so that we know what our, what our, our baseline is for financial management as a relation to some of these projects. Or just to separate it a little bit.
Okay, and, and so Paul, in, in your report, you, um, you talked about, uh, the session with Mary Ann uh, being to talk about the financial reporting system and to explain the different types of reports that are generated by our, our system. And Gail's also talking now about more of a status report. Is that correct, yeah?
Yeah.
Right.
So is that something that you would intend to incorporate, or would that be a, a separate session?
No, I don't see any problem incorporating it. I would also like to have Mary Ann and I be able to present to you our recommendation for the budget process for next year, and I think we can wrap them all up into one.
Yeah, and I can tell you mine too. Like, what an example is, we got a copy of the check register, right?
Yeah.
I don't know what the hell that's for. And so, you know, that's a financial report, but, you know, the purpose, intent, scope, or, you know, I don't know if we gotta prove those before they're paid or if the check's already been written. And if they're already been written, it's kind of old news, so. Just points of discussion and education.
Yeah.
Sure, and, and, and some of those things have been as part of the roles and responsibilities of council.
Yeah.
Right? And so, so there's some interconnection there, which is why I think it's a good idea to look at, to look at this maybe as one process, but it does get spread out over several meetings, so that when there's, when there's connections like that, uh, those can be analyzed by the staff, so. Now, did anyone else have, uh, comments on, on prioritizing these five different meetings? Okay, so, Paul, what, what it looks like to me is, um, the le- the last priority on that list is the work session on, um, committees, commissions and boards. Okay, so that would be the last, the last priority. Um, and, and please feel free to jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, I try to just, just mark down every time someone mentioned. Yeah, I can count on that. But, uh, the, the number one priority for us would be to review the, the priorities in the work plan. Number two priority would be the financial report, including, um, your proposal for budget. And no one else mentioned Gail's proposal for budget being there, but, but he did, so. Uh, something along those lines. And then it's sort of a, uh, we haven't really distinguished in priorities between, uh, the department head meeting and the, the, um, starter kit that Alex has discussed. So, I would suggest that if Alex is willing to put that together and that, you know, fits with, um, with, with your goals, that we, that we maybe do that, uh, starter kit, uh, as a venue, but it's some, it's a, it's something we can get this week, but later on, after we've talked about priorities and finances, that we do have a meeting where, where we all sit down and discuss those roles. Maybe take a look at the, the training videos that LOC has. So, does that clarify what our priorities are?
I, I, I want to make sure I got this right. So it, number one is gonna be the session on the priorities?
Yes, and the work plan.
Yeah, so I think that would be a good place to bring the department heads in so we can all sit here and participate, 'cause what you'll see reported are the, the recommendations from the department heads. And you'll be able to see how, where we went from those lists to, to the master list and then ended up with the priorities. And I think that would be helpful. By having the department heads and the employees sit in, I think we can begin to solidify those relationships. So that's number one. So am I correct in assuming that number two is the financial?
Yes.
Discussion, and I'll, will include in that the current budget, uh, the new formats and the proposed, uh, new budget process.
Yes.
Can we do that, Mary Ann?
Sure.
Okay, good. So then three is gonna be which one?
Um, and you, you called it the session covering the responsibilities and requirements of the city council.
Mm-hmm.
So, Alex is calling it the starter package.
Right. So I think the idea of the starter package is good. We can get that to you. We could even build some of this in as ten or fifteen minutes at every council meeting.
Yeah.
Okay?
And then if there's room for it at the end, the work session on, um, commissions and committees.
Right, yeah. Superb. So that means we're meeting next Monday night?
Yeah.
That's correct.
When's the next meeting then?
Well, that's the, the twenty first, so then you go, we have a regular meeting on the twenty eighth.
I mean, when's our next work session? Or do we schedule that?
I think tenden- and, and anyone can, can disagree with this, I think tentatively the, the plan would be to look at Monday nights as work session nights between council meetings. But I think that when we go to the, the work session, we hold the work session, we see where we're at, um, with these, with these reports on, uh, this upcoming Monday, the twenty first, then we can decide at that point to schedule, you know, to, to firm up the date. And everyone can check with their wives and their work schedules and things like that to make sure that's gonna work.
The fifth of December won't work because we already have that pre-scheduled for the downtown work session.
Does that make sure?
On December fifth, at seven P M., uh, the Joint Economic Development Task Force is meeting with all the downtown folks and anybody who's interested in revitalizing downtown here at seven to, to create, what, what are we trying to create there and what do we have to do to create that?
Okay, other questions about that report?
Thank you, Counsel.
So the next item is, um, a report on the fire given as part of it.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, this report, uh, has, has been coming along and developing, and it was originally due on October first. Uh, however, when the report was initially done, uh, some things have changed since that date. Uh, most notably, we have a full city council to receive the report, so I think that's gonna be helpful. I, I'm not gonna wander through, um, uh, all of the detail that's in here except to point out, uh, point your attention to page four, uh, where I have summarized the revenues and the expenditures approved in the current year's budget for the department. Uh, and you'll note in there that I've identified some areas where I think some adjustment needs to be made. So, we know that if we stay on the current course without an operating ambulance service, uh, we're, you're not gonna see, uh, a heck of a lot of money come into that department. So much of the department was supported by outside fees and charges for service. We already know, and we've reported, um, before, that Multnomah County has suspended the twenty thousand dollar contract with the city of Cascade Locks until we have an operating ambulance service to be able to collect that. I think in reality, you're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty to eighty-two thousand dollars is what you're gonna have for a fire, uh, service. So that would be one. The other areas that I think are really important are on page, uh, six and seven. So what I've attempted to do here for you is to lay out my recommendations for short-term strategies to get you back to an operating, uh, fire and emergency service department. First one is to reinstate as many of the mutual aid agreements as possible. Uh, this has been completed, so we've already done that. The only ones that are not possible to reinstate at this time are the Hood River County mutual aid agreements, and as we talked earlier, we expect that within the next thirty to sixty days, those will materialize. Second recommendation for short-term strategies is the contract with the city of Hood River for fire and ambulance services. You approved that contract tonight. Third was to contract with the city of Hood River to obtain technical and management assistance. You approved that. That actually began the first week in November, and Chief Wells has been in here working with us to help us move forward. The fourth recommendation to move forward as quickly as possible to rebuild the department is to recruit and train new volunteers. Chief Wells is assisting us in verifying and improving the current volunteer recruitment process, developing a strategy to encourage former volunteers to reapply. Um, and as our number one priority, uh, is the return of the ambulance service, because that is where you're gonna see some of that revenue. So those things are currently underway. Uh, the fifth short-term strategy that I recommend is the council create a city council subcommittee on public safety. And this, and, and this is done quite often by city councils. You have specific subcommittees who oversee and assist in certain areas. So I'm recommending an oversight committee that works with us in the rebuild process, and I've attached to my report a job description for a council subcommittee on public safety. In terms of long-term options and strategies, I'm recommending that you create a public safety task force. This is separate from the city council subcommittee. This is going through some kind of an application process, selecting ten to fifteen citizens to work with us and, and the council subcommittee to figure out what do you want your fire department to look like? How much is that gonna cost, and then what's the best way to deliver that service? Is it continued operation as a part of the city of Cascade Locks? Is it contracting out for that service? Uh, is it creating a special district and moving the, the tax burden off of the city onto the special district? I realize those last two concepts have been tried before and apparently not very successful. But I suggest to you that you are in a totally different situation at the current time, and it is well worth the effort of the city to take a hard look at that. To help that committee operate, we have the commitment of the Fire Chiefs Association, C I S Insurance, and the Oregon Special Districts Association, who've all committed to come to town and help the community figure out what do we want? What's it gonna cost and what's the best way to deliver it? So those, those are my recommendations. I'm not expecting that you make any kind of a decision, but at some time in the future, we need to move this to an action item so that specific pieces of this can be acted upon. I'd be glad to respond to any questions you may have.
So, I, I think this is also the appropriate time for us to have a discussion about, in particular, these, these proposals relating to the short-term strategies and the long-term strategies, namely the creation of a subcommittee and a task force, um, that will be charged with, with carrying out some of the, or at least assessing, perhaps carrying out some of the recommendations. So I'm assuming everyone's had a chance to look at this report. Are there any comments on, on these recommendations?
What's a good recommendation?
Gail?
I'm not a big fan of big committees, and, you know, and I've already talked about it, but the number ten to fifteen, you know, just doesn't settle with me very good. You know, sometimes you get too many people, you get too diversified and you can't reach any consensus. And originally, you know, I didn't have a good idea about a, a committee at all. I don't know. You know, if there was gonna be a committee, I, I'd almost like to wait and see what Devon Wells, you know, I don't know, you know, if there was gonna be a committee, I, I'd almost like to wait and see what Devon Wells, you know, gets down the pipe and accomplishes and, and us being able to work with him on some recommendations perhaps. And, you know, the good thing he mentioned about the committee to the other entities that would be involved in it, you know, which I think would be of value. But, uh, I guess just the structure and the time and it was like we're gonna have committees studying, studying part of what, uh, Devon Wells is gonna be helping to reinstate and study concurrently, maybe that would be done serially. I don't know, I just, I just have some cautions about it. The other thing I, I wanna clarify is, is the financial status a little bit on the fire? Uh, because although what you read of the budget is accurate, that's not accurate as far as our cash balance situation goes.
That's correct.
And I don't want everybody to think there's more money there than what's there. Uh, in, in reality, we're in the red about, um, eighty, ninety thousand dollars, which will get the tax money usually in November, which might wash it out in part, but not in whole. And that's part of why we're suggesting some of these other inter-fund transfers to pay our way going forward without digging a little deeper. So the, the, the budget is not the balance and that's just an important thing to remember as we move, move forward.
Um, I kinda said this a lot in the budget, um, process that, the thing is, is we've spent so much time just looking at what's happening as today that we haven't looked in the future and so I like the idea of the task force because we need to have a group of people that are dedicated to doing exactly that. And I don't really know what the right number is, but I think it needs to be a diversified group of, you know, people who are ready to bring ideas to the table rather than, you know, of course, we're not interested in quibbling and that kinda stuff, um, actually bring thinking outside of the box and doing that kinda thing for our community. So I like it. I, again, I don't know what the number should be, but I, I, I think five's too little, is fifteen too much? I don't know.
Tell them, John.
So, so just a question, uh, to, for, why, um, the number fifteen?
One.
Why do you think fifteen is a, you got two, two committees there, well, so why you, why you looking at fifteen?
Tom, I see this is primarily a citizen commi- task force who helps the city council and the community come to grips with what kind of fire department do we want? What are we willing to pay for? What is that number and how do we deliver that service? If it were me, I would, I would recommend you have a committee of fifty or sixty. I happen to like big numbers. The more peo- the more citizens that you can involve in that process, the easier your decision is gonna be. We certainly can work with five. But, but I think the, the, to me, the issue is go out to the community and figure out what do you want? What is that gonna cost and how are we gonna pay for it?
And, and the committees aren't slowing down the process of us moving ahead with whatever, you know, we're, we're not waiting for the committees to move the fire department ahead on anything. We're just doing it to committees, to, to, to making it better, to, to research more things, looking at, looking at different ideas on it. So the committee shouldn't slow down anything that, uh, the, the movement of the fire, of the fire department moving ahead that is Devon Wells, Devon's gonna be used to kinda.
That, that's really a good point. No, it will, it will not slow down the rebuild process. But it will give you, and I, and I'm recommending a ninety-day work period for this group to figure out what you want. This is the long-range issue. Should we even be in the fire business?
And you think that's a citizen issue to address?
Supported by staff and the outside resources that have agreed to help.
So, so just to follow up on what Tom's saying there, I think what, and the way I understand this, this, these proposals is that we have two tracks moving forward. Whether one happens first or, or they, or they happen concurrently, um, you know, we can decide that. But I think it's important that we understand two tracks, okay? One is a short-term strategy to get the fire department rebuilt, functioning, answering medical fire calls. And that's the, the thing that's already in motion, we put in motion, uh, tonight in, in our, our action agenda. Okay, then there's also a long-term strategy portion, um, which as the recommendation comes to us is a larger committee, uh, that looks at long-term, you know, I think three options were mentioned, district, contract, provided ourselves and, uh, the rest of this. So I think it's important that we recognize two different tracks there that, uh, maybe one, since one's already in motion, that's, that is going forward, scale question, and the other one could, could come in alongside it or could come after it, depending on what we determine. So, i- i- if that, hopefully that clarified something. Jeff?
So, we've just, we've determined it's gonna be two parallel actions being taken. The question is, is how much time in the short term do we get, is it gonna take to get the end game of getting our fire department up and running to provide the citizens the coverage they want? And, uh, Gail mentioned that our financials, uh, the financials that we see here aren't quite actual where it is because it's anticipated revenues coming in. With that being said, so the revenue generating from the ambulance service itself is, uh, is able to bring in revenues to cover those costs. And the sooner we get those, uh, facility ambulance up and running and get paramedics online and going forward, that'll help offset some of those revenue concerns that we have. But I guess that'd be our priority. Um, the question for you is can you juggle what we're asking you to do and is the staff gonna be able to keep with the city's business and moving forward? Because we're gonna be asking staff a lot of juggling and getting moving forward. We're gonna be able to do that.
I think the answer is yes, and you, we really have very little choice. As the mayor points out, that track, working with Devon Wells and the city to rebuild your department and get the ambulance back and operating is the number one priority. That takes, that takes the precedence of all of my time and I'm gonna take a wild guess, eighty to eighty per, five percent of my time since I've been here has been working on that. That, that's been the priority. The, the other issue, the one of how do you address the long-term decision about whether we stay in the business and in what format do we do that? Uh, that also has to be done and my thought was to have that done in a short window of time so that when you're in the budget process next spring, that report comes back and gives you something from the community that of course is assisted by staff and the outside resources. But it, they b- both have to fit together. Yeah, I, 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 I hope I'm responsive to your question.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, Mark?
So in, in ninety days, then, uh, we'll have a, a concrete answer of what, uh, what the council wants, what, uh, what direction we go in ninety days? Is that what we're shooting for?
I, I'm not sure, councilman, that you could say concrete. I think in ninety days, with the resources that made available to us, you should be able to know what is it you, your community wants the fire department to look like and do. We can figure out how much that will cost and then they will have to advise you. Their recommendations would be to you, get out of the fire business and contract it to somebody else, create a district or get in the business and let's raise our taxes or vote or, or do whatever you have to do. Because it seems real clear that you cannot keep going down the road that you're going down. Thanks.
Yeah?
Can we discuss that as a part of, you know, the session where we're talking about committees and commission?
I think it, I think we can. I think it's important, if, before we get to that, is it, is it something that we, you know, is it a recommendation that we wanna move forward? I think that's a decision, or at least a discussion for tonight. But yeah, I think that how that, how that task force gets appointed, um, is, you know, fits into, you know, that, that issue of, are we gonna standardize how we do appointments?
So, so it's nice to decide whether we support the concept less than the structure.
Yeah, and I think, I think we, yeah, we work, we just work further and further towards the goal of, of getting community input on where we wanna go with, with the, um, with the fire department. And, and I'll say, um, uh, I'm not sure where I come down so much between the, the idea of fifty people on a commission versus five, uh, except that I do think it's important, uh, a five per, to understand, a five-person task force is going to operate more efficiently, uh, is gonna process information, have discussions, uh, quicker than, uh, a fifteen-person task force would be. But, uh, I do think it's important though that we recognize, um, sometimes that you will have to sacrifice that efficiency, um, to get more voices included, uh, and to in, include more people in the final solution to, to what happens. Just as an example, you know, there's probably people in the community that think, you know, my, my garden hose and a bucket is what I need from a fire department. You know, it's, you know, one hundred percent volunteer, I'll volunteer when I've got a fire. On the other side, you know, we may go as far as, um, you know, we need, uh, you know, we need to create a, a, a huge fire district that might include all of Hood River County. We need to be a part of that. You know, and then, and I think that as you, as you listen to people, you'll find that there's perspectives in between, um, the extremes and, and the idea of having a larger task force is that whatever your opinion is on what the city needs to do with its fire department, uh, you have a voice at the table, okay? You at least have some input in the final decision. And it is not gonna, you know, the bigger you get, the less efficient it's gonna be, but also the bigger you get, the more perspectives and the, and the broader base the final decision will, will be. So I, I, I hope that we'll look at a, a way to balance those two, efficiency versus inclusiveness.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify my five, right? I don't, I don't want to leave the impression that these five work in a void, you know? I assume that there, you know, if there's five, for example, that they would hold meetings that the public could come to and get public input, which would be your fifty people or a hundred or whatever. So I'm not suggesting that five may have been a think tank and come out with a miracle solution. I'm assuming they melded in the community and give feedback and take those opinions to them, formulating their own decision.
Mayor, if I could, go ahead, Tom.
So, so there's two things on your recommendation here. One is, is, is like we're kind of melding the two into, into one. Uh, the fifth one is, is a, um, a subcommittee for public safety, which is short-term. And that's not your fifteen-person committee, is it?
No, that would be a, that would be a city council subcommittee. That would be two or three of you who would be appointed to that committee to help in the rebuild process and begin to pull the fire department back into the city structure.
And that's your, um, that's the job description of, that's what you have, that's job description for is for that?
That's correct.
Is for that public safety committee, which is short-term.
Yes.
In the long-term is where the ninety days is and the, and the fifteen person. So that's, that's further out there. That's, you know, these are two different, two different committees, so.
Right.
Yeah, so, so the short-term one is a small, is a small committee, just a, just, and it's, and it's got its description on here of the things it's trying to, to get after. And then on the long-term, which we have time for, is to, is the one that we're not, we don't need the stuff right now for, is put a bigger group together. So the, so the, the recommendation is, is two different committees here and it's like we're kinda pushing them into, into one. One has the fifteen ninety days, one has small amount of people and it looks like it's councilable and has description of it on. So.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
Thanks, mayor.
I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, and if you look on page seven where I described that public safety task force, that's the citizen part of helping you deal with that long-term issue and I suggest that they hold community meetings, uh, and, and, and look at how different people are doing this. And I guess the other thing I would have to say to you is that you are ahead of the curve. It, almost every city and fire district in the state is gonna be in the same predicament you're in. A greater desire for something and maybe not enough money to, to supply it. And, and that's, that's the issue that this group has to help you deal with.
So are there other, other comments on this report? Um, I, I did wanna touch on, um, on the, the short-term track idea of having a, um, a council subcommittee, uh, working on the short-term strategies. As I think about this, um, uh, I guess what, uh, what I'm thinking is if I'm going to appoint a subcommittee, it's gonna be members of the council, um, and I just thought about that, well, would I just pick and choose? Would I ask who's interested and, and so, so my thought is if, if there's people on the council that wanna be involved in, um, uh, in the short-term strategies and, and working with them and so on, they, they oughta have the right to do that. Uh, before we're forming a subcommittee, it's gonna be a public meeting. When they hold meetings, there's gonna be agendas, minutes and so on. So unless we just, unless we only have three people interested in short-term strategies for the fire department, it seems to me this would be, um, you know, maybe handled better as a, as a special session of the city council when it's time to have those meetings. Is there a reason why that wouldn't be, um, a good way to approach it? Is there, is there an advantage to the subcommittee that, that, that leads you to choose that, um, as a, as a preferable alternative? Do you understand that?
You, you, yeah, I, I, I think any way that you want to do it can work. It, it just happened to be my recommendation is this is, this is what, the way I would recommend you do it. But that's only my recommendation to you. You have to figure out how you want to really do that.
The only caveat I can think of on that is, uh, from what I understand, there may be, uh, you know, uh, a pre-meeting with the, uh, the old members of the department to explain the plan. And I don't know if you were, you know, I think there oughta be council representation there. And, uh, you know, if there was a task force, then that task force would attend, I guess. But if you get, well, what's the rule for more than one counselor in a meeting or something?
You can have three, but you can have four, which is four.
But, and, and move that, that's the only circumstances like that where, you know, checkpoint meetings with, uh, Devon as far as to review statuses and that. He may, may, may not be able to meet, you know, Monday nights with the whole council, but he may be able to meet with a, like, subcommittee or something. That's my two cents, you know, no matter who it is.
A- a- and, and mayor, that, Gail raises another good point. The rea- the reason that we built, we had you change your agenda to reflect this, these are only ideas. Some of them you've already acted on. They're, they're new ideas. Yeah, as far as I know, maybe you've never had council subcommittees. So you need to think about it and talk to people and see what is the best way for us? It may well be that the entire council wants to serve, uh, in that role and that's, that certainly is possible. And as we do stuff, we're gonna bring it back to you. And there would be nothing wrong with this council having a couple of community meetings and saying, hey, we got problems. We have to figure out what we want our fire department to look like and how we're gonna pay for it. What is, what'll people think?
Ready? So at this point, I think we've had a discussion. Um, I haven't heard anyone say, um, absolutely not, uh, any of these suggestions, although we do wanna to, to look at refining how these particular subcommittee task force, uh, groups come together. And Gail's suggestion that we include this as a, as a discussion on our review of commissions, I think is a good one. There's some need to, to, um, hold a, a meeting of the subcommittee prior, um, to that discussion. Uh, I think it'll be important for you to communicate that to us.
Sure, okay.
Anything else? So we'll move on to, um, our final report, um, about appointments to the economic development task, task force committee.
Great. Honorable mayor, members of the city council, the previous council established as a part of their economic development prior- priority goal, which was priority number three. And you have in front of you my report and a copy of the approved job description for the joint city port economic development task force. Part of the rationale for doing that is, was recognition and many communities are facing this same issue again. Until we get to the point where we see more jobs created, where we have more taxpayers and more local value, the ability of cities to provide services is going to be a diminishing game. So economic development became a very high priority for the previous council on that basis. Given the changes that occurred as a result of the election, there are now two vacancies on that task force to be filled by city council members. Now, there are some other options that have been developed and have come up that we wanted to have some discussion about, and this may also, Mayor, be thrown into that big basket of boards and commissions. Maybe this is something that the full city council wants to be involved in. And up until this week, that committee has met Tuesday mornings at ten. On the December fifth work session, that is that task force again, but it's moved its meeting to the evening. The port is having the same discussion. Do we make the entire port board available and can we make the entire city council available? So all I'm trying to do is to let you know that this is a task force that was approved by council. It has two seats for council members, and now we have to figure out how you want to approach that. Do you want to continue with that approach? Or do you want to see it moved to a position where maybe all the council members could attend? And then for both jurisdictions, both the port and the city, those then would become official meetings and would require notifications and minutes and all that kind of stuff.
Well, if the meetings were in the evenings, I, I would be well, willing to attend. I don't, I don't want to be one of the two assigned people, because there's a lot of them that I, you know, might not be able to. But I'd like to attend and observe, participate. But was there any, it's kind of on a sidebar to that, was there any rationale why the planning commission didn't have a representative? I'm not, I'm not seeing them on here. And I think legislatively, at least it was, under state guidelines, they were responsible for economic development.
Well, economic development has to be a piece of your comprehensive plan. Most communities do not have planning commissions. Doesn't mean you couldn't do it, counselor. But at the time we set this up, it, it was driven by the economic development being a third high priority and the council desired to meld their efforts with the port. And so this was the, this was the way we decided to do it. Doesn't mean it can't be changed.
Other discussion, have you given?
Um, I would say with all of these meetings coming up, there's probably a good chance I can't go to everything, so. But having the flexibility to be able to attend what it can attend is like.
And with Eva too, if I'd like to attend then, it's just juggling work schedules and that. If we have the ability to have different members of this council sit in on that and be a part of that process and not violating any of our meeting laws, I think that would be a good, a good thing for us. But being, having just two members permanently assigned to that, I think kind of restricts the ability to do that, so.
Other comments? Paul, you mentioned that the port is looking at the possibility of having that as a, as an official port meeting so that all of the commissioners can attend. Is the expectation that it'll be all five commissioners? Or is it, is it going to be flexible like Eva and Jeff were talking about?
I, I honestly don't know. That was part of the strategy for moving that downtown meeting to that Monday night to see, how, how will that work?
I think that what I'm hearing from, from people here is that evening meetings are going to be more accessible to the people on our council. And I think that, so I think that's a good move. I'll say also that one of the consistent things that, that I've heard in my time on council is that a proper goal for the city is to develop partnership with the port. And when I think about the purpose of the economic development task force, when I think about the purpose of the port and a role that the city can play developing that partnership, this task force seems to be, seems to really align well with a way for us to partner with the port. Because there's things we want to do, develop downtown, a role that we have to play there, port has the task of, of economic development in our community. And this is just a great first step. I mean, it's, it's a way that we can have a joint meeting and an agenda that focuses on something that is, is going to be productive and, and really benefit the whole community. So I like the idea of making this a joint meeting with the council and, and the port commission to the extent that, that that's, that's the direction they're headed, I think it is. And it gives, it also gives us the flexibility that those who can't attend the meeting are, are able to. Because it becomes a, a proper public notice meeting. Gail?
Oh, I can do that.
Well, I think that's, I mean, that's a question for Paul. I think they've been meeting weekly, but I think something, I think we're in a, in a transition there where we've changed to an evening format. And I think it's to be determined, but Paul, if you have anything.
No, you're right, Mayor and Councilman. When we started, because it was a high priority, we felt weekly meetings were required.
Well, just my two bits worth again. I, I don't, I wouldn't want to tie us down again for once a week meetings on just that topic in addition to everything else that we're trying to cover in the next few months. I'm not saying it isn't important, but, you know, if it was once a month, then maybe, but once a week, I almost don't think so. And if they've had meetings, then do you, do they have minutes coming out of their meetings to get an idea of?
Yeah, the port produces the minutes.
Of, of what was discussed?
Yeah.
That might be helpful. I just have, I mean, I support economic development, I, I know we need to pardon the port, but my mind is, is telling me to be selfish right now about just the city issues and get past the fire analysts, the finance, some of the other things as a, as a priority.
And I like your suggestion of a once-a-month meeting. But I do look at this as, as a fairly high priority for our community, economic development. It has the potential, long-term, to address some of the, the short-term issues we're facing. So I think that as we, as we start to set the vision for the community, this task force, this partnership with the port will play a fourth role in solving some of our other, other issues. So I don't, I don't want to write it off because I, but, but you're right. If we're doing work sessions every other Monday, it's, it's, it's going to be a challenge to fit in, fit this in as well. But I think it's, I certainly want to hold it up as a, as a priority in terms of partnership, in terms of community development. It's a, it's a real positive step that our community can take to start working together on something.
Mayor, if I could, and I, and I think these are, so many of the issues, folks, are, are in the same category. That was the way it was set up. It was agreed that the group would meet weekly at ten o'clock. We're, we're in a different ballgame now. We have a different council. You can, you can cover these things up to be any way that you want.
So as far as moving forward from the December fifth meeting, is there anyone who's not comfortable having that be, assuming that the port's willing having that be a joint meeting of the city council and the port?
Is that a normal council meeting or what?
It wouldn't be a joint meeting, it wouldn't be a normal, regular meeting.
So that's a time when we could be having a workshop, but we're going to have a meeting with the port instead?
That's right. And no, I don't agree with that. Is there anyone else that disagrees with that idea?
And talking with Gail, I think, I think our first priority is getting the services restored to the fire EMS for our citizens. I think we need to focus on that and close the other issues we talked about. If it infringes on our Mondays, we have to figure out another place to have that meeting that we need to, as Gail said, there, there's bigger, we have to take some bites out of this and get these issues dealt with in front of us. Because they have to fit in our short-term goals. And then we can start looking out longer, reaching out longer, looking out forward and going with the other items that are out there. But I think we need to focus on a very narrow thing right now and then juggle the other things as they're coming out. But we have to, the ambulance and fires, I think are the top priority right now. We can, we can surely juggle and multitask, but we need to get those, those things put out in order first. Revisit in a month or two.
Randy, how do you feel about?
Well, I, I think they're both important. I'm just trying to, tell them, they must be right behind me, but I don't have any meetings we're missing. We only had an opportunity for one non-council session then before the fifth, is that, is that how it works?
When you say non-council meeting, how do you?
Well, non-regular council meeting, the, the two a month.
Sure, there's, there's, tonight, and there's, we've got a, a plan for a week from tonight. On the twenty-eighth, we'll have a regular council meeting. And then the fifth is the next Monday night.
I guess, I guess I would agree with Jeff then that, you know, to try and put it off a month to give us some time to get some things rolling for the fire EMS.
Okay, Paul?
The fifth isn't our council meeting, though, is it?
It's not a regular council meeting, no, that would be, that's why.
Well, the fifth couldn't be our council.
We're talking Mondays for hours to our meetings.
Special, we're suggesting that it's a workshop.
Oh.
Yeah.
Gail?
Which, you know, thinking about it more, you know, I, I'm not even sure what, I mean, I can make up a lot of things like I usually do, but I'm not even sure in reality, with confidence, what we could say we can offer the port or businesses without having met with the departments and what our infrastructure is like and what, you know. I mean, one, one of my suggestions been for years, you know, what I understand other cities do is for, is to induce businesses to come here by giving them discounts, you know, on city services for a period of time. And, but I don't know how that fits with water and electrical and such like that till we meet with those departments and get a feel for, you know, what's our tolerance level to be enabled to increase certain, the way, or a cost, you know? And, and, and just some other things, you know, like, I don't know what the city owns, but I, I remember driving down the freeway and I saw one city that advertised free land. They're from business located there, you know? So there, there's several, several things to take into account. And I, I don't have an inventory of knowledge of the city infrastructure to be able to discuss it as well.
So, yeah, I would, my mom lives out in Sandy and there is a sign up there. If you'll build a group hub, if you'll build a group hub, they'll give you the land.
Yeah.
And maybe that's an idea for us, but if the port has land, they want to give away. But I, I would say though, if, if just looking at our timeline that we've established, okay? We're talking about next Monday, having a meeting with the department heads where those conversations could happen. Looking at the priorities and assessing those priorities a week from today. Two weeks from today, having another regular council meeting. And you can look in the back and we've got the, the future agenda set for that. And, and that might include some more discussions and reports on, on questions that come up next Monday. And then the following Monday, having an opportunity with that information to do a joint meeting with the port. If that, if that makes sense, if you sort of think about that timeline, the information you're looking for actually does come to you.
Or, or we could use that session to discuss cities and commissions or, you know, commissions and committees. We're not done with our stuff, that's like what I'm coming with.
Mark, did you have anything?
Well, priority wise, I'd probably, you know, want to work on the fire, plus the holidays too. It's going to be really tough to, you know, get some of those meetings and, and, you know, priority wise, I'd probably stick with the fire issues.
Tom?
I, I kind of like what you're talking about there is, and I think probably from my end of it is, see what's happening. See what hap, see what comes out of this next Monday meeting? And then see what comes out of our meeting after that and our next full meeting. Make a decision, I think, I think that gives us a week to, to decide whether we want to do a joint or if we want to stay with things. But I, I don't, I don't think it's something we should lock into tonight on. I, I think we have time to, to lock, to go into. But it's, if it works out by the next full meeting, that it would be prudent to do that, then I, I think we should wait for that time.
Eva?
Um, I kind of like Tom's idea there about getting through a meeting or two, like on our next, on the twenty-eighth. Look at maybe whether we can, whether we've gone through enough stuff to be able to be there. I think that it's important to, even if we went there and got a baseline, but I understand the, trying to get everything through. We've only got five Mondays before Christmas.
So would anyone object to the idea of revisiting this issue on the twenty-eighth, our next regular meeting? So we'll put that down on our future agenda. Okay, thanks Paul for those reports.
Thank you, Council, appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is mayor and the city council comments. So I think what we'll do is we'll start with Jeff and just work our way around them.
The head of us didn't work, so it's important to.
I had a question about email. When we were on council before, we had a special email address that got archived. Is that, are we still going to be doing that or?
I believe that's on our next, our agenda planner to maybe discuss next time what, what we want to do about that because we think things need to change. So we're not, we're still researching on what, what we can do and how to do it.
I've been talking about free email, but.
Email period.
An email period that automatically archives for the public record, kind of question.
I think we're, yeah, we're still researching that.
We're going to wait till we figure out the virus problem.
Okay.
Just don't conduct a lot of city business on email while you're waiting for the response.
Okay.
Or print them and put them in a file, if you do, that's the safest.
Nothing?
Yeah.
Okay?
Nothing.
Mark?
Peruel, I appreciate your honesty, you're out there, you know, talking, that's, that's really nice to, to hear. And also I like to acknowledge the, Lance was talking about partnership. And this weekend I was out at the port area where the, the new track is. And I just want to, you know, tell people that the organizations and the volunteers, that they did a good job. And I think, you know, the town needs more of that with the partnerships and, you know, working together. I was out there and I spent about two hours out there walking the trail. And, and there's some really neat views along the way. And, and I just wanted to thank anyone that was involved, you know, volunteering, that it's a really good, really good thing for the town.
I would agree with that. I got to go out and check out that, the trail they put in, out there along the industrial side, along the waterfront. So we are seeing more and more bicyclists come to town, and so, so bicycling is happening more out here. Another, another event that happened in the, in the park, they had a disc golf competition. Pretty rainy day for it, but they, they didn't have a huge turnout, but the ones who did turn out really enjoyed the park, enjoyed the setup, and they were ready to come back again. So more and more people are seeing Cascade Locks as a, as a recreational area, a, a lot of variety recreation here, so. Yeah, it's good to see that going on. That's it.
Eva?
Um, I would add to that, I was pretty excited about, you know, the development at the west end of town. There by the walking path, I thought that looks, it's going to be just great and give a little bit of time to grow in. And I appreciate that everybody put work into that. And I like diversifying things here in Cascade Locks because in Hood River, you know, they have lots of bike trails and people really hit it, they, they really like that. And so they like new stuff, so that's really good. And it's, just makes our community even more beautiful, so I appreciate that. And I'm excited, on another note, I'm excited about some of the stuff we're talking about tonight and some forward momentum, so.
I also wanted to touch on the, the trail that the, the port has put in on the industrial park. park. I, I did take some time last Saturday to, to volunteer there. Mayor Hood River was also there, shovel, digging out the trail. We have people from Portland, Vancouver, Stevenson, White Salmon, Hood River, all over coming to, to, to help develop that trail. Opens up some, some really beautiful scenery for, for mountain biking. And, and to have seen, every person I talked to was, was saying, this is going to be great for families. It's a, it's a great place to bring your family and to, it's really is rip out a couple tracks, something, rip out a couple loops. Must be some mountain biking terminology, but Tom's right. It's, it's, it's turned into a destination for biking, and recreational opportunities are there for, for our town. So I wanted to thank the port for, for opening that up. Colleen Howell is the person that helped to coordinate it, and she's working on, in the sign there, just like they did with the Blackberry Beach, it's a great project, so. So good job that the port and the volunteers worked out with that. Also wanted to mention that Gale, Paul and I had a chance to meet with our acting fire chief, Zerfine, as well as six volunteers that are going through the process of training and becoming firefighters. And it was, it was a good meeting. There's a lot of energy in that group, people that, that are committed to getting their certification. They're, they're already talking about Fire Academy starting next year and, and getting that training. And I think it's important that we recognize those people, thank them for the work that they're putting into getting their training and completing their certifications. So, so thank you to those folks. I've also noticed that members of council are contacting staff with questions and, and concerns and, and getting information prior to the meetings, and I think that's really important to help. And Paul's doing a great job of keeping us informed with his, his sometimes reports, but as questions come up, it's, I think it is appropriate for, for us to, to contact staff with questions and concerns and points of clarification, so that we're prepared for these meetings. So, so thank you for, for doing that. I also wanted to recognize the city staff for once again putting together the Giving Tree program. If, if you know someone that's child from, was it zero to seventeen, Kathy? That's, you know, maybe has a need in the holiday season, what they're asking for is a name, age of the, of the child, an address, and some of their wants and needs. I dropped that off at City Hall. Something the city staff does on their own time. They collect these during the, during the day, but, but they organize this during their own time. And we again want to acknowledge the Alliance for contributing to that. It's, it's a great opportunity to, to share in the community and, and any community members that would like to take one of those tags and go purchase the gift for, for someone, you can talk to the city staff, and, and we want to encourage everyone to participate in that camp. So thank you very much to the staff for helping to coordinate that once again.
But you can just donate cash, but you don't have to buy a present, do you?
I think so. I think that's part of what the staff does, is there, there'll be a fund.
That's what I thought the staff did. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we have an item for other matters. Is there anyone that has other matters? And correct if I'm wrong, Alex, I don't, don't have an executive session planned for science. So a little bit left on the agenda is adjournments. So I'd take a motion for that.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion made by Jeff, second by Gale. All those in favor? Any votes in the second?
Thank you, Council.